And then you'll be on.
Okay, at this time I'd like to call a meeting to order. Um, roll call please.
Um, Brian Geely.
Present.
Corey Wodolski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Brian Mahan.
Present.
And I am present.
For those who are able, please stand and cover to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have a written paper?
Yes, we do.
Understanding. Understanding. Understanding is using your mind to think clearly, paying careful attention to see the meaning of things. An understanding mind gives you insights and wonderful ideas. An understanding heart gives you empathy and compassion for others. Understanding is the power to think and learn and also care. You're practicing understanding when you concentrate and pay close attention, reflect on the meaning of things, see the whole picture, resist distractions, put yourselves in other people's shoes, forgive others and yourselves when you make mistakes. Affirmation. I have an understanding mind. I see the truth about things. I have an understanding heart. I have empathy for other people's feelings.
Thank you very much. Okay, School of Board Guidelines with an Open Mind. We've established an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even if views are not in line with all members. We work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest communications around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. And just as a note, we're going to be updating our Board of Education guidelines. Um, we haven't done so. We have some new board members that need some input in that. And we need to bring it in alliance with policy governance and RSTD plan. So, um, public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? And we don't have any out there, so.
Oh.
We do have an esteemed, esteemed person here, Mrs. Black. And I didn't mean, would you like to say something? I apologize. We're always privileged to have you in our presence. And one of these days, you are going to surprise Mary and Jim. One of the days.
She can't tell you or it won't be a surprise.
Thank you. CWSA update? I really got that one, didn't I? Any update from CWSA? I didn't make it to the meeting last night. But I didn't either, I didn't either, so I gotta try to get there next, next month. And we're on to the Wise Academy update. You're on, Ms. Carey. And I know you're.
So.
Yeah. You're good.
Your turn, Carey.
So, I'm not exactly sure what I'm supposed to be updating you on, so Terry, you kind of direct this a little bit and then also correct me if I'm wrong. Wise last year had just over a hundred students. We can cap at a hundred and fifty. And, uh, this year we capped. So, it's exciting to see that, um, there's interest in the academy and enough to fill the school. We had two open houses, virtually, and they were well attended. Uh, we also sent out a survey two days ago, I believe, um, to see how people's ordering process went, um, how filling out all the paperwork is going. We only have had, last time I looked, seven people reply, but so far, things are looking really good. They, um, people know how to fill out a learning plan. Uh, they know how to fill out curriculum orders and how to tie that into the learning plan. Looks like things are running smoothly. What else do I need to tell you?
Well, I think it's us that need to tell you thank you for, for what you all have done. Your governance council, um, Terry and your leadership. A hundred and fifty students is really spectacular. Congratulations.
I agree.
We can't downplay that enough as to what that means to our district as a whole. And I take great pride in being able, being able to serve those students. You know, that may, if we weren't here for them, who knows where they'd be? But they're ours. They're yours. And we're proud to have them. And, uh, I gotta thank you guys for all the hard work.
So.
You're sitting next to Terry. He did a whole lot of that hard work, so, yeah.
Well, let's start, let's, why don't you mention the other stakeholders? And then also our.
Turn it. I can't hear you.
Mention the other stakeholders. Because we brought on Carol and we've got Stacy and Kristen have worked extremely hard. But then talk a little bit about field experiences in the upcoming year and our work with Jeannie Peterson. And you want to talk just a little bit about that?
Okay. So, one of the things that we have heard from parents quite a bit is that, um, by having this model, students are pretty isolated, as well as the parents. So, um, we have worked hard to come up with two different kinds of things. One is field studies, which is kind of like field trips, but a little bit broader. Uh, it can be a single field trip or it can be many that cover the same topic, but several weeks in a row, where you go out into Wisconsin somewhere and, and learn a topic. Then, um, many courses are more traditional classroom-ish setting, but it's not a classroom. We're thinking it'll be at a library, uh, where community experts come in and, um, teach something that parents typically can't get their hands on a curriculum to teach their kids. So, uh, oh my goodness. Uh, potentially knitting is one thing that's getting tossed around. There's, uh, 3D printing. Oh, I'm totally blanking right now. But we've got a list of great stuff. Anyway, and Jeannie Peterson was brought on to coordinate the whole thing. And so, our first field experience is going to be at Mead. And, um, hopefully, uh, they will learn all sorts of things about the Wisconsin wildlife and what Mead does. And, um, I think it was about a month ago, we went to Schmickly and did something similar. So hopefully, they'll get, um, a flavor for, even though it's not too terribly far apart, um, the two places run very differently and they'll find different things in those areas.
Good. Any questions? But you do need to know that Stacy Russell and Kristen, Krista Aggie and Carol Henrichson at the middle school, she's become the, the virtual school secretary at Wise, have worked extremely hard and it has been a lot of work. So, yeah, it's been great. And, and Carey's been a great, uh, chairperson. So, thank you for chiming in. Did you, any questions?
Thank you very much, Carey, for your time. And have fun on your trip.
Keep studying.
Yeah.
See ya.
Yeah.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, at this time, we're going to do a quick handoff on, uh, video equipment. Um, we're going to be having our presentation overarching results for, uh, the team this evening will be Mitchell, Mitchell, Mitchell Fisher and Heidi Hartman. And you're sitting in the exact spot where we need you to be.
So, just to front load a little bit, if I could. So, August, September, October, as part of our communication plan, we're really highlighting our message is rigor, high expectations, learning options for all kids. And last week, actually, last Thursday, the board met to really talk about learning environment. So Nathan went back and, and.
Right, and so one of the things that we, there's a lot of discussion around is we have a new curriculum that we're going to be starting up in. We're essentially piloting in grade four this year and then grades K through five are taking another aspect of it called the Number Corner. And this is the curriculum, a new math curriculum we're working, we're moving towards grade K five. And so, as we had a lot of discussion around that and how it's different than it is and what are the things that students are able to do because of it, there's no better way to share that with you than invite the people who are on the front lines, um, doing that. I just want to also give a quick shout out to both, um, so Mr. Fisher and Mrs. Hartman were among our team, also with several Humke teachers, to go ahead and, um, do our pilot study last year. And we spent a lot of time at various other schools and, um, looking to judge and what our best one is. And so, I want to thank them for their time there. And now they get to go ahead and test drive the car they were kicking the tires on last year. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about it.
Yeah, and one reason we only decided to pilot the Number Corners and go after the Number Corners this year is because the program is incredibly overwhelming and we want to get goo- good at one piece of it before we put everything into place because the elementary school is still implementing the ELA curriculum that they were working through. So, we wanted to be sensitive to that. Uh, fourth grade has taken on the pilot for the Bridges part of it too. But we're gonna, we're gonna mostly focus on Number Corner, but because it's all blending together for me, I'm gonna throw in some Bridges. It kind of all blends together sometimes. So, the pictures that are in there are fresh in the last two days, so, of kids working together, um, on a team, so.
And the Bridges too is the main math curriculum and Number Corner is a supplementary piece that is a preview and review of the math curriculum. So, Number Corner is made up of five different workouts, so there is a lot of different option for students and they will get a different taste each, every day with, uh, with the Number Corner. So, one of them, the top one, is problem strings. And what it is, is basically, they are, the strings are strands of, uh, Common Core curriculum or a skill for that day. Just to give you an example, one of them was adding, just adding two or three digit numbers. And it starts out with a really easy problem. They give you a desired strategy that they want the kids to discover. But as a teacher, you don't give the students the strategy. They have to discover it on their own. And the questions are geared to help the students find it on their own.
It just, just a word of warning is the kids discovering on their own, that is going to come as time comes. But because he's seen pieces of our, our kids working with it last year, he's getting more of those pieces than we were able to implement last year. So, and again, this new group of students hasn't seen anything in this curriculum. So, we're building that and he's seen some benefits from that, so, in, in here.
And the way the lessons are built up too, if the students don't get the desired strategy right away, the next question, I've noticed that like a whole group didn't get the desired strategy. They had two or three other ones that they shared. But then the next question, like half the class got it. So, the, the way the questions progress, they get the desired strategy. And they take a lot more ownership when they find it out themselves.
Yeah.
Um, this is a twenty minute, they say focus on it about twenty minutes a day. You'll see one or two of these workouts each day, not all five of them in the twenty minutes. If, that would be really hard. Calendar grid is kind of a traditional type of math, um, where you have the calendar math, but it really focuses on different patterns. And those patterns will build into whatever your next unit in Bridges is that you're teaching. So, it's kind of a preview reviewing those third grade. For me, it's the third grade skills. For him, it would be the fourth grade skills to help them to be successful in the next unit that's coming up. And then calendar collector. So often in math, you miss the data and measurement parts of math because that's the fun part of math and it's kind of the part that always gets put at the end. They tie it into an everyday collection and data. Um, we're right now working on collecting parts, uh, like a half a foot each day. And they have to learn how to convert that half a foot to how many feet do we have? How many yards do we have? And so, it's tying in the fractions at the same time. So, it's tying in patterns as we add a sixth of a yard each day or a half of a foot each day or six inches. And then we're working on multiples. So, we've got a lot of things in one little piece that takes us about five minutes to do.
And, and going on to the computational fluency, for our calendar collector, we're looking at volume. And with the computational fluency, we're looking at multiples and factors as well. And with volume, they're working with the multiplication of the factors and multiples. So, they, they all tie together. And then lastly, the solving problems is where they're dissecting word problems, looking for important information to solve the problem. And they're all working with groups during this, so they're finding multiple strategies and then they share out the strategies to the classroom.
They're like, yeah, they're, it's the comprehension piece of, of reading a math problem. So, because that's difficult for kids to do, no matter what age they are. So, it's looking at how to read that part of the problem.
Figuring out what it's asking and then what important information they need.
It's really hard to see this, but this is our data collection in fourth grade. You can see my yard sticks and their kids are adding. Where it's yellow, it's covered. So, we've added, I think, one and two-thirds yard so far. Where it's yellow, it's covered. And then on the left side, we're keeping track of our calendar grid pattern that's going on over there. It's working on multiples of eleven. So, we're working on multiples of six and multiples of eleven. Both difficult for fourth graders, but when you do it one, one day at a time, it's more manageable.
And to see that this is a, a review piece too. They're topping, are covering multiples and factors in fourth grade and we're reviewing it again in fifth grading and building upon it.
Oh, here's our.
I did find an error in there.
You probably have, because the kids were keeping track of it.
Nine times six is fifty-four.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they fixed that today. That picture was taken yesterday. They realized that yesterday. But see, the kids, that, the kids take ownership in this.
Awesome.
So, if the kids make a mistake, they also correct the mistake.
Good.
So, they take ownership in these pieces. And they take an ownership of those, one on the right. They have, I haven't taught them how to do the one on the left because of the time consuming of that one right now. We're learning other routines. But thank you for mentioning that because that brought out the piece where the kids.
Did they find it?
They did.
Awesome.
So, the kids take ownership in it. And this is, this picture is of our number line where we were, the blue ones are multiples of two, the green ones are multiples of three, and the box around are the multiples of six. So, the kids are realizing that if it's a multiple of six, it's also a multiple of two and three. So, all of the, that's a lot of information in a very little time.
Wow.
And to build off, so the, the math academic language, the kids are using it. It's like if you look at the second bullet points, that students are sharing their solutions rather than shown by the teacher. So, we are just applying the problems and then going around and looking for who has the best strategy that could share the class. There's not a lot of teaching from the teacher. It's a lot from the students. They're sharing their solutions, their strategies. And the, the students are buying it a lot more when they hear it from their peers rather than, than the teacher.
Part of the teacher's job is to go around and look for good solutions and ask them to share and to teach the class of how they did it and model.
So, from the pilot from last year to this year, how has the growth and progress been from?
We're in week two and a half of school. So, it's been about four months. Or ask Cam, actually ask Cam, because we're starting over again because they haven't had any background yet.
Sure.
So, we're starting at square one again.
Well, has it been different from last year, from square one to this year?
No.
A little bit? No?
No, and it won't until they have some background knowledge. Until they, we're using the same language year after year. But it was like reintroducing them and hyping them up that this is, you guys get to test this out and try this, but he doesn't get the same thing. I give that piece. I can sell it.
So, how many people in fourth grade or how many students were using this last year?
The Numbers Corner, we implemented the Numbers Corner with about twenty-five students last year who were really struggling. And so, we were using it as a preview piece to the next unit.
And just to pick, do a note on that. The way it's designed is that, um, a lot of math, one concept builds on the other. Number Corner goes ahead and reviews everything that's coming up in all the background knowledge that's necessary to succeed in a given unit, the unit before it comes. And so, people are primed and ready to go and have background knowledge ready to be accessed by the time they get the mainline stuff in Bridges. And so, it really is a, a well-designed system.
And even with, so twenty-five, you said, maybe twenty-five students and then mixed in the other classes, some of them are already aware of the procedures for each of the workouts. So, that's helpful too, so they can go in and help the groups and be a leader in that back too.
And because we had an intern last year, Holly Olson, who was our first grade teacher, we, we were able to implement more of the pieces of Bridges too. So, they did have some smattering of, of the Bridges program also. So, um, because we were able to bring that down to smaller groups for math then and be able to accomplish that. These kids are working together. Um, we have a mix of every level and every behavior, um, in these groups. They're all working together, the whole class. And, um, they work together to try and solve the problems and they're coming up with ideas. And they might not know the math chalk, but they're showing what they notice and others are helping them to solve the problems then. Oh, here's a calen, here's a picture of my calendar math. So, we just happened to be in my room and I started snapping some pictures, so. So, you had something to see what we're doing.
And it is very rigorous. You can tell right off, second week of school, it is, it is tough. It is challenging for the students. But as they work through the grades, when they see it in first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, it is definitely going to build up those skills so that they can build upon it and succeed.
They're going to grow accustomed to the rigor of this program.
Are you seeing a lot of frustration right now or?
Not when we partner them together well. I could have seen a ton of frustration in the la, in the last two days with, and I brought something that they were working on. So, just to kind of show you, this is more the Bridges part of it than the Numbers Corner, but, um, just to show you the rigor of that, the kids were each given a number and they had to discover how many rectangles this number could make. Well, nineteen only makes one rectangle. That's one by nineteen long. Four made two rectangles. One was two by two, one was, uh, one by four. What they had to discover today as they went around, and this one, this is the same rectangle. And they're like, wait, that's the same one. It's just turned a different way. So, they had to realize that. This was my sample, so this was not kid work. But this was my sample to try again here. And, um, just showing them dimensions, multiplication problems. And what they had to discover out of this is that some numbers only have one rectangle, meaning it's a prime number. And other numbers have more than, uh, or two or more rectangles, meaning it's a composite number. And that was the goal out of this lesson. And they did discover it. Some of my struggling kids were the first to discover. And then they said, well, all odd numbers are prime then. And then we looked at that and we said, no. And then we talked about why some make squares and some make rectangles. They had manipulatives and stuff to get to the solution that they worked through. But it was a two-day of working there and then they had to discover this together. So, and I discovered there's not enough room to hang thirty-six posters in.
Cool.
What other questions do you have? I feel like we talked, but what kinds of things can we help you understand? It is very rigorous.
Sounds very rigorous. I'm impressed.
It's very.
And, and I do math. So, I know. I'd like to sit in sometime, maybe.
Come on in. And, and one of them.
Well, I know your doors are open, so.
Yeah, literally, no. No, they are always open for you to come in.
Sometime after I've done greeting? Okay.
We teach, we are, um, I'm doing Number Corner at ten forty.
And I do it all afternoon, starting at one thirty until three thirty.
Okay, so maybe I'll come in early on, uh, Thursday.
Board member, other board members too.
When I come in for chess. Do you know what I remind, what you just reminded me of? Remember when I came into the chess thing, I said how many squares are on a chessboard?
Yeah.
There it is.
Yeah.
That was good.
So, one of my questions is, um, this is your pilot, highlighting this in fourth grade?
The whole program, yes.
Okay, so what is this curriculum for? What grade level?
This is.
It's K five.
This is a K five curriculum. So, grades K, K one, two, three, and five are just doing Number Corner this year. And so, and just the twenty-minute piece. That it works as a review, preview, it's a standalone. But it helps them get to know and also, it really helps the kid, the students with that as well. Grade four is doing Number Corner as well as everything else together. And so, as.
And hopefully, what that does is help. It is extremely overwhelming to implement the entire thing and trying to work out some of the kinks and bugs before we interpret, or, um, implement it in the other grades. I'm learning a lot of tips and tricks for prepping for it. But the first unit I had to prep took the four of us eight hours to do. By the second one, I had a few more pieces in place and it still took us about, it took about six. So, I think it's when I.
Should work for four for the next one.
Yeah, we're working at it. We're working at it. I'm getting some system stuff. There you go. Decreased by two hours each time. I don't think there ever was a decrease.
There's an algorithm for this.
Oh, look, each year.
Um, each, uh, Number Corner and Bridges are set up for one month unit, about a twenty-day unit for, for both of them, broken into four modules. So, you're focusing on one thing for about a week, um, in each, uh, each module. So, you have about five or six days in each module. And then that module will be, build on the second module. And the second module will help, and the third will build on the second and the fourth will be, build on the third. So, by the time they're done, they're really getting that standard down in that month that's there. And the Number Corner focuses on, um, those previews for a month. So, twenty school days is usually about what it is.
So, what about the transition then after fifth grade? How does that transition?
Actually, phenomenally. Because one of, starting, now, we've been doing CPM math for, in grade six. Uh, we implemented six, eight. We're in our third year this year of doing that. And then the high school's been moving up. So, they're now, they're in, they're up to eleventh grade this year. But what happens is in CPM, there are groups of students who are working together in teams who have to talk about and, guess what? Figure it out on their own, come up with their own solutions. And one of the biggest areas that if they can learn how to talk and come up with their own solutions and figure things out by themselves, if they're doing that all along, by the time they hit sixth grade, it's, it's second nature for the, because talking about math is a skill that I would guess most people at this table don't have in abundance. And much less our fourth graders and third graders and everybody else. And so, these are things that students, but you give them time to practice it, do very well with. And that would be, and so, one of the things that this, in most, now, CPM math is done by one quarter of this, um, districts in the state. Um, and most, of other ones who are in CPM, the vast majority highly recommend Bridges as a lead-in to it because it really prepares them to, not only is it rigorous, which, um, but it also teaches them the type of skill, interpersonal skills they need to succeed there too. So, it's a great match.
I'm enjoying it. I'm not sure everybody is, but I am, because I enjoy math. But, um, and I think part of it is, is because it is overwhelming to begin with. The Number Corner piece does not seem as overwhelming because you can prep for that in about twenty minutes a day.
Twenty minutes a day, yeah.
But the, to do the whole thing is taking about forty-five minutes to an hour because it is so, it's scripted, but it's, you don't have to, you have to hit the action points. There's a lot of stuff in between. But, um, you have to kind of take it all in so that you're asking the right math questions. You're, you're getting them to come up with the solution. You're, you're getting them to come up with the solution. What is the right lead-in to it so that they can talk better about math? And they can use the right math tools. It's about giving them a, a number of math tools to get to the answer. And then you, them using the right one to get to the precise answer.
So, they're getting some support. We had a coach come in and really talk with both the folks that are doing number corner and bridges. So they're gonna get some follow-up support. And our hope is that the fourth grade team gets excited about sharing their tips and tricks with.
I will.
The group next to them, so. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Let's see them later.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for taking the time to come.
Yes, have a good night.
Good luck in this program. Okay, Ms. Linn, leave her. Our next one's back. Do they put it up here?
I can just walk around.
Good evening, Ms. Linn. It's your time to be on the floor. You've started school now. It's our last visit. What do you have for us this evening?
Um, so student council right now is really just trying to nail down um and finish preparing for homecoming week. The past few weeks have consisted of figuring out crowns for king and queen. Um, making sure that all people who are wanting to be on court are accounted for in the, um, in the vote for the grade. And then, um, we just have been doing spirit days and stuff like that, so um we're pretty well prepared right now. After this week and into next week, it will be good. And then once the homecoming dance hits, um, we're ready to go on to October and plan for what the month of October will like for us.
And our homecoming game is week after this. It's coming up quickly, isn't it? Anything for the community to know for homecoming activities?
Um, powder puff is Sunday at seven at Holland Field.
This upcoming Sunday.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then the parade is at five thirty on Thursday with the pep rally to follow. And the football game is at seven on Friday. And the homecoming dance, um, is Saturday.
A lot of stuff real quick. Seems like homecoming came quick this year. It is early, yeah. A lot, a lot of October.
We're doing, we're doing the uh, the beef thing that we've done in past this year?
Yes, roast beef will be at the football game. Uh, there's um a tailgate party going on at five. And then that will be before the football game on Friday.
So not during the parade then?
Not at the parade, though. They're gonna have rock your bocoes during the parade before then.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Grill.
All right. There you go. So, I have to, for you tonight, just a quick update to give you a little bit of perspective of what Joe and I do every year to kinda monitor our numbers for students with disabilities. Because every year we wanna review how many referrals we had, the areas we're having referrals, to kinda monitor our, our multi-tiered systems of supports, our interventions, are they working? To be helping students before we go to a special education referral and in what areas? Because as you know too, we can pick a student up at school to provide services, starting at age three if they have that disability. So it also gives us the idea of what community outreach areas we need to look at, how do we need to support families? So we're early intervening as best as possible. So, just to give you a little review, I kinda told you why we do it, but in eighteen nineteen, we had ninety-four special education evaluations that we completed. So the number is pretty high, but I'll say, most of those were three-year reevals. Cause as part of law, a student with a disability must be reevaluated every three years. But as you see, our initial referrals, we only had thirty-five last year. Now, when we look at this, this right here, I have another graph that I didn't put in where we break down what areas are we evaluating in. But what I like to see from this, if it's an initial evaluation, how many of those students are we referring that have a high potential qualifying? Cause we wanna make sure we're not misidentifying students. So we're looking at this and saying, hey, you want one twenty-one, qualified fourteen, we're ineligible. So is that education? Were they referred? Cause too, when they're younger, we have speech and language and other areas of disability. Where sometimes a doctor refers to us versus a parent or an educator. So sometimes too, that's where we are seeing we might have to do education with some of our medical professionals. Because their um qualifications for a student to be labeled as having a disability with speech and language or autism or things of that area are different than school criteria. So they may qualify under a medical piece, but not qualify under educational criteria. But we look at this number to say, here's how many evaluations, and then we break it down further, Joe and I do, to see what type of evaluations. But looking this as well, so across the bottom are the different areas of disability criteria. As you can see, especially with our younger students, speech and language, you can see that's the S slash L is super high. That's because a lot of students, just due to communication needs, especially with articulation, that's where a lot of our preschool-age students qualify for services under special education. And those are ones, a lot of times, that they may qualify at a young age, but then after they get assistance from our speech and language pathologists and build those skills to say there are sounds, different blends, things like that, a lot of them may exit speech and language after three years or so. So speech and language has always been a high number for our district. Um, you'll notice two words says OHI, that stands for other health impairment. That's where, like I said, I wanna start working with some of our medical professionals this year. Because some of them, once they say, oh, a student may have attention deficit disorder, ADHD, or different areas, they'll say, oh, you should go to school and talk to them about special education services. Well, sometimes even though they have a medical diagnosis, it's not affecting them in the educational setting. Now, sometimes it is. But that's where I want them to, instead of saying, go to them and go get an IP, say, hey, go have a conversation with this person and discuss with them what it is that you're concerned about and things like that. So that way, Mr. Haines and myself can talk through the difference between medical criteria and educational criteria. Cause some medical professionals think, oh, we have the same criteria as them and we don't, so. Um, these are our numbers for students with disabilities over the past five years. And as you can see, we trend down, starting in two thousand fifteen, we go down. And now, especially this year, we're trending back up a little bit. But the one thing I want you to note with the one hundred ninety so far this year, obviously we're two weeks into school. We didn't complete eighteen evaluations in two weeks. So that trend up is, we had actually this year, we had twenty-eight families, while twenty-eight students with disabilities move into our district. So that's something we always watch to and track, are the numbers that are moving in. So not only the ones we qualified through our process, but how many move into our district that also have a disability. Because sometimes the number, you always wanna stay right around the state average, which is about thirteen to fourteen percent. Right now with our one ninety, we're sitting at fifteen and a half percent. So we're up a little bit, but some of that is due to move-ins, some of that's due to our evaluation process. But I just wanted to show you some of the things Joe and I keep track on to look for trends. What are the areas of disability? And we discuss, well, how do we educate staff? How do we educate family, families, so that way they're part of this process as well to intervene as early as possible, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Go for it. What does that do for MOE, maintenance of effort?
So with maintenance of effort, as we get more students, so we can maintain where we're at, okay? But what we have to do, they look at our students with disabilities and our cost per pupil for maintenance of effort. So as it goes up, if we were to spend the same amount or if we were to raise costs, they would say, yep, that's legitimate because your numbers have gone up. But also works in reverse. So if our numbers go down, they say you can decrease your costs for spending on students with disabilities legally. So I always watch it to say, you know, if we have to add an educational system or things like that. That's where we as a district spend money, but they say, yep, you should be spending more money. But if that student were to move or transfer, that's where I claim an exception and lower it right back down. So that's another reason, thank you for bringing up, that we monitor this as we go along.
Looks like he's got his own forecast file.
I try.
Brian, Brian and I work really closely on monitoring the MOE, cause it, it has to deal with cost. And we wanna make sure that we're at that sweet spot all the time.
Thank you.
Good luck this year, Brian.
It'll be a good year.
Okay, and we're gonna vary a little bit from the agenda. We are going to move ahead and look at our wellness policy. Um, Ms. Candice, turn it on.
Thanks. All right, well, um, two thousand eighteen, nineteen was a busy year for the wellness group. Um, we started the school year off last year and we did do it again this year with a soft start, which I learned about at a conference I went to. Um, we go ahead and we had time built in at the beginning of the first in-service day where teachers could go around um and be involved in social activities, they could go to their rooms, they could go ahead, um, Diana went for a walk. I had the climbing walk going. Steve Gennarick had basketball going, the fitness center was open. Um, it was, and they could just go around and just kinda ease their way back into the transition of being back in the buildings and stuff like that. But then we did like breakfast and went into our guest speakers and stuff like that. Um, I believe it was perceived well the first year and, you know, asked for again this past year, so we did do that. Uh, it was really interesting is some of the responses that I got from people were, oh, it was really nice cause I got to talk to this person who was not in my building, who I don't see on a regular basis. Or I went, um, a group went walking and they did a little tour in each building, seeing what's happening, just cause, I'll be honest, I never leave the high school, that's where I live. Um, so it was really nice socially for the staff and everyone just kinda felt at ease then when the, the meetings and everything started, cause they got that kind of other system. So we implemented that, which I believe went really well. Um, we also did the Packer Challenge, which AMS kicked everyone's butt on and we're great at, so they won that last year. Uh, the high school increased their physical activity times by opening up the gym again to lunch. And Mr. Han does that, and regularly he gets forty to fifty kids in the gym every day at lunch, playing basketball or volleyball or something active. They all come out like sweaty little things. So, um, that is great and it's also helping kinda just let those kids burn that energy for when they go into sixth hour, they got some of that out of them. We created a, a website, uh, or we created a district website for wellness. It is linked on two different spots within the website. Um, it includes our mission, our team, like who's on it, the actual full policy. Um, I put quarterly newsletters on there, um, wellness challenges, the results, things like that. And then different community resources that I've been, um, in contact with, providing so that there are numbers, phone numbers for the contact if you wanna be involved in this program or that program. Uh, I also, we, we had Jim, Amy, and Josh attend, uh, building wellness capacity at your schools. And what we found out is that we were actually doing great things and we're ahead of the game, believe it or not. It was awesome. So all these schools are asking actually those guys, well, what are you doing and how are you doing? And they're kinda like, we're doing this. And so it worked out really well, um, just reaffirm that we're doing the right things. Uh, we also worked with the YMCA. Um, I was there this afternoon talking to them. And we did a, if I just quote it right, we are a workplace wellness plan. So with the Y, we signed an agreement, there's no cost or anything like that. But if any of community members go ahead, or any staff members wanna join the Y, the waive, the processing fee will be waived. So that's a fifty-dollar savings. Um, and then there's also a little bit of a discount with their first month membership. Uh, they did give us a free re-trial, I think it was right before spring break last year, that anybody could go to the Y and try it out for free for a week. And then I was talking with Nathan earlier, is they're gonna come in and kinda promote, really try to get the word out there to people, um, on our in-service day in October and hope them to schedule that all. So that's my next little project. But we're in partnership with them and trying to build, um, bigger capacity with them. We also went ahead then, and we've been doing a lot of work with UW Stevens Point and Dr. Corey Huck. Um, so we reviewed and analyzed fitness results in the spring of two thousand eighteen with our high school students. And from that, we kinda got a health assessment, where our kids are at and where we're, they're high and where we're doing well and where we're low on. Um, it was determined that they went ahead and worked together and determined which fitness tests are appropriate and beneficial. Our students are all grade levels that we're implementing this year. So from this point on, we will have a consistency at all three buildings. Before, each building was kind of its own little entity, and we did what we thought was best. Well, now we have four standard tests that we are doing with the kids and it's gonna be tracked, K on up to last class in high school. I work a great deal with Diana and she created, um, a system on Power School to track. So I'll be entering in all the results, Diana will export it, put it into Power School, which only can be seen then by us. It's not something that is public knowledge or anything like that. But it just allows us to see and then follow, you know, see kids, where they're changing, where things are moving and if we're having, what kind of impacts we're having on them. We'll be testing their blood pressure and resting heart rates, waist circumference, which is part of body comp. Uh, they'll be doing the Pacer test for cardio and then they'll be standing long jump for strength. And actually, so the high school's all done testing. On Thursday, the middle school is testing and there's gonna be a bunch of students coming from UWSP to help, um, Josh, Amy, and Jim implement these tests with the middle school on Thursday. So that's very exciting. I'm sure the kids are gonna love these new people coming in, that'll be fun. Um, US, UWSP also did training with all of us on how to properly administer these tests. That was in August and, um, sensitivity and things like that. Uh, we created the recording tracking system and the high school also implemented wellness breaks, otherwise known as brain breaks. Um, we did that with our extra time from those snow days last year and we continued it this year. And just to prove how cool we are, I went ahead in August, SPAS gotta found out what we're doing, the Stevens Point School District. And in August, I presented to eighty of the teachers, uh, aides, and then all their administration, saying, this is what Nacusa's doing with wellness breaks, here's how we did it, here's some of the struggles we faced, here's what we're gonna continue to do. And they are now implementing a program at their school, wanting to be like us. So, we totally rock that. Um, the other thing, just a few more, is we are building interactions between the schools and the PE classes. So the high school, the last few days went over to Humke and played kickball with the little kids, which, I mean, some of my big boys had like three little ones hanging off their arms and all around them. It was super cute. And so we're gonna try to build relationships between the various schools. I'll be sending kids over to AMS to do projects with Jim's class coming up here. And he's implementing, also trying to promote like the athletics and things like that, like, hey, you can be cool like this guy and this is what they do. Um, to try to build more unity with that. So that's what we've done. What we're gonna be doing, we're gonna continue all that stuff we just started. We're gonna implement that fitness testing and tracking system. We're gonna work, continue to work with wellness breaks. And, um, I'm in constant contact with UWSP and SPAS. I actually have now two, um, practicum students. So this is the first time we've ever had, um, students coming from UWSP to work in the PE program, so now I have two of them. And in October, I'm presenting with Corey Huck, um, to the, we're doing Prime the Brain for Learning, a breakout session at the Business Ed Conference in Fond du Lac. So I mean, again, people think that they're cool or something, it's crazy. Um, we're gonna continue that work for best practice with Corey and the team, continue participating opportunities for wellness promotion, staff, students, community. And we meet once a month and ensure this progress continues. So that's kind of, we've done a lot in a year. It's pretty awesome. Is there any questions about any of that? I kinda was.
Yeah, other than the workplace wellness plan with the YMCA, can you describe the relationship, um, between them in terms of the wellness policy?
Um, they really haven't had anything to do with directly with the wellness policy. The we, we're just kinda building that relationship back with them and seeing what we can do. We did do, um, last year at the high school, we did a cla- or I shouldn't say class. One of their instructors came over for the fall and they did classes with anyone who wanted to. We paid like fifteen dollars for like a ten workout punch card thing and then we could go on certain days whenever it worked for us. And she came right to the building and we did it right in John Jackson's classroom. So there was all these ladies working out in the business ed room. Um, the one problem we ran into with that is, it worked great in fall with all our schedules, but once winter came, also this one had basket, take their kid to basketball or wrestling or whatever it was and our schedules changed. And it was not cost-effective at that point for us in the Y to continue. So when I talked to them today, we talked about bringing that back, um, but we are gonna be working with them to try to really, last year we focused a lot on the students' wellness and improving the students' wellness, but working this year more to improve the staff wellness and going from that angle. Did I answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Any others?
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
And I think the committee's having fun too.
Yeah.
I mean, so, to boot, yeah, it's a very active committee.
You're all, thank you very much. And then we're gonna go back to Ms.
Thanks Candice.
Thank you Candice. We'll go back to Ms. Lynn Knight, um, for our, our. We'll go back to Ms. Lynn Knight, um, for our, our, our bunch of updates.
So, um, last month I indicated that I would be giving the board an update on the preliminary budget. Um, there's a handout going around, uh, there's four pages to that handout, and I'm just gonna kinda go over um, the preliminary budget a little bit in detail, so when we get to the annual meeting in October, you won't be completely surprised. So the first page kinda goes in conjunction with the second page, so if you put them side by side, it'll be a lot easier to look at both of them.
Side by side.
So the second page, the landscape page, is the revenue limit worksheet, and that's where our budget begins. Uh, everything is tied to the revenue limit worksheet, it basically tells you how much money you're able to raise in taxes and state aid. So there's a lot of assumptions that are going into the spreadsheet at this time, because most of the numbers are not known until October fifteenth. So I'm gonna go over the assumptions that I used to create the preliminary budget today. The first assumption is listed on the first page, um, I've listed it in two thousand eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty, so when we talk about nineteen twenty, you can see how it compares to last year, okay? So the first one is the per-member adjustment, low revenue ceiling adjustment. Um, if you look on the revenue limit worksheet, it is in the upper right-hand quarter, uh, and it's highlighted in yellow. Now, the state said that, okay, last year you are going to get nine thousand four hundred dollars per student. Okay, great. This year, they're saying you're gonna get ninety seven hundred dollars per year per student. Now, the folks that are get, already getting ninety seven hundred, we're gonna give you a hundred and seventy five dollars extra too. So we were at, last year, we were at nine thousand four hundred. So in order to get us up to the low revenue limit ceiling of nine thousand seven hundred, we have an increase of three hundred dollars. So some folks are only getting a hundred and seventy five increase, we're getting three hundred because we're low spending. That's the first thing that happened out of the state budget. Um, when they put money into the revenue limit worksheet, schools with declining enrollment do not see the full benefit of the increase. So even though they're saying we're getting three hundred dollar increase, we are declining enrollment school district, which means we probably see about sixty percent of that increase. The next item that I'm going to talk about is the membership in the September FTEs. That's on the left-hand side of the revenue limit worksheet, and it's the summer FTE nineteen and, uh, the September FTE one thousand one hundred ten. Now, that is the third Friday count in September, the third Friday count in September has not happened yet. So what I did is I took the numbers that were counted last year and I just rolled them forward, so those are the same. That number is going to change after the third Friday count in September. The July first aid estimate is on the right-hand side of the worksheet, and it's the three million sixty-three dollars eight hundred and eighty-seven. By law, the state is required to give districts a July first state aid estimate, and that's what that number is. Um, we got a little bit of a, of an uptick in that, last year we only had two point six million, this year we're a little bit over three million. So what happens when state aid goes up? What goes down?
Our ability to levy.
Right, it's a balance. So if you look at the next line on the, the spreadsheet, the taxes, last year we levied eight point two million, this year we're levying seven point eight million. And that's a direct result of all of the assumptions that were plugged into this revenue limit worksheet. Now, that will change, these are all preliminary adjustments. So the, uh, one, another item in the revenue limit worksheet is the equalized value, that is the value of the whole school district. That is on your revenue limit worksheet, on the left-hand side, the very last number, one billion sixty-five million. Now, last year, our equalized value, the value of the school district, increased by five point four five percent, it was huge. This year, I'm only estimating a conservative three percent increase. Now, if it goes up, that has consequences, if it goes down, that has consequences, it has consequences on the mill rate. Because the amount that we levy is spread out all over the value of our land. Okay, so as the value of the land increases, our mill rate goes down, because we're spreading that levy across more value. If that value goes, what did I, down, then our mill rate is going up, it's an adverse effect. So I estimated at a three percent increase, the number will not be known until October first of this year. Um, this, uh, levy also includes debt service, which is in the right-hand corner. Uh, I'm specifically talking about the one point four million. Now, last year, we levied an additional six hundred thousand. This budget, this revenue limit worksheet also has another six hundred thousand included in that. And there's a reason for that too. If you look at the mill rate on your spreadsheet, last year we had a ten dollars and fifty-five cent mill rate, how much we charged per thousand. This year, with all of the assumptions in the revenue limit worksheet, our mill rate is at nine dollars and seventy-four cents. And that will change as well, depending upon many factors in this spreadsheet. Another number that we're not gonna know until October fifteenth is the private school voucher. Now, the state said, we are going to allow districts to levy the taxpayers for private school vouchers. And so you're getting the money from the taxpayers, and we want you to pay it right back out. So we're a pass-through, so the only folks that are paying for the private school vouchers is Joe Taxpayer. We don't know that number yet either, last year, it was a hundred and thirty-three thousand seven fifty-six. So those are the assumptions that went into the revenue limit worksheet, a lot of them. And this will not be finalized until October fifteenth, and our annual meeting will be on October twenty-second. So, there are other revenue assumptions that I made as well, and now I'm back to the spreadsheet, the first page. Uh, open enrollment estimated, I took, uh, we received one point two million last year, I estimated the same amount, because again, it's tied to third Friday count, which doesn't happen until Friday. Uh, transportation aid, I talked last month about our audit, how we had a little ding in our transportation, so I am expecting a little downtick in our transportation aid. Sage is another very complicated formula that is almost impossible to compute. Um, I know that our free and reduced went up a little bit, so I'm estimating an increase in our Sage or AGR, which is what, John?
Achievement Guarantee.
Thank you. So I'm estimating an uptick in that as well. Now, this is where I really get excited, because I love per pupil aid. I love per pupil aid more than I love money on the revenue limit worksheet. And the per pupil aid is cash in hand, so the state is saying, okay, we're gonna look to see what your three-year average is on your enrollment, and we're gonna give you last year six hundred and fifty-four dollars per kid, cash in the bank. This year, they're saying, yep, we're gonna look at your three-year average, but we're gonna give you a seven hundred and forty-two dollars per kid. That is cash in our bank, nobody else is taking it. Um, so that will change as well, as soon as the, uh, numbers come in for third Friday count. All of this is like intertwined, it's like a spider web. High tra- high-cost transportation aid, we received a little over a hundred thousand last year, I'm expecting another hundred grand this year. So those are the assumptions that I made on the revenue side. Any questions before I go into the expenses?
Does the per pupil cash in hand affect the amount we can levy?
It does not affect the levy, no.
It's outside of that.
Yep, it's categorical aid, which is, we love categorical aid. Okay, so I'll go on to the expenses then, and these are my, oh, go ahead. Oh, okay.
He's ready for it.
Okay. So these, again, are expense assumptions. The salaries and benefits, um, were, was nine point six million last year, I am estimating a nine point two million this year. And that's based on eighty-nine FTE teachers and forty-four FTE support staff, including Fund Ten and Twenty-Six. Now, again, you have to remember that we had an insurance decrease, so that's a part of that, we had some staff decreases, that's a part of that. I'm estimating, or I put in the budget, four hundred thousand dollars for staff increases, we need to pay our staff, we need to give them raises, um, so we need to budget for that, so these are all assumptions, anything can change, but as of now, I threw four hundred thousand dollars in that pot. HRA is a health reimbursement account, and that's the bridge between our, our, uh, health insurance, high deductible plan, and what the staff actually pays. Retirement benefits is very exciting, because when I first started, it was one point two million, we're down to two hundred and three thousand, which is amazing. So, and that is a direct result of ACTON. So that's gonna continue to go down as we kinda phase out that, uh, other post-employment benefit. Open enrollment is the same as last year, um, again, third Friday count, it all depends on, on that number, so it hasn't happened yet. The voucher, I talked about the revenue that we levy, uh, for the taxpayers, this is the expense that's going out, so we're like the conduit, we're the pass-through. The next five items, Board of Education, District Administration, Business Office, Technology, Buildings and Grounds, and Transportation. Um, those numbers don't change too much, so I basically took, uh, what we budgeted last year and I threw it in this year's budget. Um, I'll take a closer look at that in the next month, but, um, for tonight's purposes, I just kinda just mirrored what we, what we budgeted last year. Insurance, uh, went from a hundred thirty thousand to a hundred eighteen thousand, and that is because of workman's comp, our mod rate went down. We're doing much better in, um, being safe in the workplace, so, uh, that's, when our mod rate goes down, you're gonna see a decrease like that, which is awesome. Virtual, we have capped at a hundred fifty, we heard Carrie talk about that this, uh, tonight, and we pay about two thousand dollars per student for their supplies and such. Um, so we estimated three hundred thousand dollars. Now, just be warned that not every student uses two thousand dollars, it's a high, high, uh, budget, um, but we need to have it there just in case they do use it all. Curriculum, seventy-seven thousand eight sixty, same thing we did last year. Terry and I are really working hard to really firm up our curriculum budget, it's been kind of a mess for quite a while. Um, Terry's created a spreadsheet that really has started to hone in on a lot of the curriculum, and we're trying to put it into a central space. So this is a work in progress. We have our lease, Yo Johnson, which is our printer-copier lease, and now we have the wireless lease, lease, lease for the next three years. And short-term interest is obviously rising because of our rates as well. So those are all of the assumptions for our expenses. Questions?
Just an observation, I guess, and I just, this looks like things are pretty good from, uh, for the most part, but one thing that, I guess, I just wanna make a note of, there are things that, as a district, that I think we need, that may not be in the budget right now. And, you know, some highlights might be some capital improvements, some things of that nature that aren't shown, that do put us in a, in a more negative situation than, than this might outwardly appear. Um, when we look at those things that we're looking to, 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 that we need as a district to accomplish our strategic goals, those aren't necessarily things that are put in, into this, all but preliminary, these are very preliminary numbers. But that's not part of our, our fixed expenses or, or assumptions for, for expenses now at this point. Have we identified some of those potential? Yes, we have, but they've not been put in there, so. I, I wanna congratulate Lynn on the hard work and, and, and some of the good things that are happening. Um, but, you know, it's kind of just, as a district, we still have some needs out there that we're struggling that, you know, we, we're gonna have a track that, again, this year the kids can't run on. And, you know, there are things that I take, you know, I'm not, I can't, I can't lose sight of those. Um, but we can't take away from the powerful impact that, you know, the work that this group administration has done in, in controlling costs, has done hard work in laying in the budgeting process. But we also know that we have a lot of bases at the district, and that's just a side point, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not finishing your thunder lift.
Oh, no, 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 I just, I'll finish the spreadsheet, I'll finish the, okay. So, um, so that concludes the first two pages, the third page is a tax levy comparison for the past seven years. And I just plugged the assumptions in from the revenue limit worksheet in nineteen twenty. It'll give you a good comparison as to what's happened in past years on our levy and our equalized value, so it's just for your information right now, this will be updated when we have the full numbers on October fifteenth, and it'll be in your annual packet as well. So then the fourth page is, um, actually all of these assumptions put together, and this is Fund Ten only. So the grants that we receive is about one point one million, and I kinda took that out of the whole mix, I put it on the top level, because we have money coming in, and we have the same money going out, so it's a wash, so I just took it out of the mix for now. So the revenues, um, that we talked about, all the assumptions, is included in the revenue column, and that totals fourteen million four ninety-eight seven twenty-three. And the sal- or the, um, oh, that, I meant to say expenses, expenses is in, uh, the right-hand column, and that's all of the assumptions that we talked about, uh, just previously, and that added to fourteen million four forty-three. So as of now, a very preliminary, very preliminary budget, our revenues exceed our expenses by fifty-four thousand nine ninety-six. And that will change. So now you can see why I really hate to tell you everything, because there's nothing to tell, it's all, it's all, uh, exactly, it's hard. So any questions on the preliminary budget?
Come back to us when we've got the facts.
Do you guys understand that some of those things that we have out there aren't on there?
Thank you again, Lynn.
Yep, thank you Lynn, a lot of work, and guess what?
More info next month.
Guess what next month is?
Annual meeting.
October, and we'll talk more about it, our annual meeting, and the meeting date will be different next month, so.
Twenty-second.
It's gonna be October twenty-second. Okay, thank you very much Lynn.
Yep.
Are we done yet, Brian? No, we're not.
We got wellness policy finished.
I know, I'm just picking on you. Our next thing up, um, we need to go back to you Lynn.
Yes.
Um, we need to talk about our resolution considering temporary borrowing. Um, this is to, to cover those costs, I'll let you explain it.
Yes, um, so every year I come to the board and ask to approve the short-term borrow- borrowing. We borrowed one point nine last year, and I'm asking that you authorize not to exceed one point nine again this year. I don't imagine that there would be a lot of changes, this is a normal, um, part of our, our school lives, is that we need to short-term borrow. During the months of November and December, um, and, uh, no, no, September, it's pretty lean. Uh, we have a lot of expenses going out, and we don't have hardly any revenue coming in, so this is, this one point nine million basically bridges that gap for us. Um, so this resolution is just basically pre-authorizing the borrowing and delegating the authority to myself to sign up on the issue on the sale date of October tenth.
Actually, I gotta, well, go ahead, I wanna just, more of this, this language, um, I'll put a motion on the floor for a resolution for authorization, temporary borrowing, in an amount that exceeds one point nine million.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote please.
Brian Mahan.
Yep.
Corey Vajdowski.
Yes.
Dave Smith.
Yes.
I vote yes. Brian Deasy?
Yes.
Thank you very much Lynn, that was, that was fun, that was easy. Um, Start College Now, who wants this one?
I am taking that. Uh, Start College Now, which is formerly Youth Options, every year we have to, uh, get pre-approval. Uh, so these are for kids taking second semester classes at mid-state. So we have nine students that are gonna be taking class, I'm just gonna read a few of them. Theory of General Sciences, Salon Services. Others are Metal, Metallurgy, Machine Shop Fundamentals, Welding Inspections, AutoCAD, Bearings and Lubrication, Electrical Circuits, Machine Shop Fundamentals, Uh, Gas, Metal Arc Welding, Industrial Safety, AutoCAD, Uh, Intro to Diversity Studies, Developmental Psychology, Nursing Assistant, which we see often, Uh, Electrical Circuits, and Intro to Law Enforcement. So that's just a, a smattering of courses that the kids will be taking at.
I'll push that motion, I think it's very good for those students to be proactive on their career in the future, so.
And again, these are tentative, so they don't always follow through, but they need the pre-approval. So that's it, Mr. President?
Do we need a roll call on this one?
Uh, I would say yes.
Okay, motion on the floor.
Let me go second.
Uh, Start College Now.
Corey made the motion, I think.
We have a first and a second by Brian Mahan. Roll call, please. Brian Mahan.
Yes.
Corey Dvilski.
Yes.
Dave Schmidt.
Yes.
Brian Giese.
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, do you need to say? Yeah, otherwise Diana can say it. Diana can say it, thank you. Um, okay, on to Policy Governance. OE Nine, Communicating with the Board. We had a very good workshop Thursday evening. We have some strengths and weaknesses, but why don't we discuss the policy? Terry, if you wouldn't mind, um.
OE Nine?
OE Nine, Communicating with the Board.
Sure.
Uh, just a.
A policy statement. Annually, the Board shall assure that they are fully and adequately informed about matters relating to Board work and significant district concerns.
Okay, there is a great body of work on this, and, um, Terry, how would you like to go about?
Well, I, do you wanna just talk about the strengths and weaknesses, or do you want me to read through the?
Just kinda hit some of the high points there.
So, uh, part of this policy encompasses providing for the Board in a timely manner and simple and concise form information about trends, facts, and other information relevant to the Board's work. Another point is informing the Board of significant transfers of money within funds or other changes substantially affecting the district's financial condition. Other topics, assure that the Board has adequate information from a variety of viewpoints to assure informed Board decisions. Uh, informing the Board of anticipated significant media coverage. And then also informing the Board, the Board President or individual members, if, in the district's administrator's opinion, the Board or individual members have encroached into areas of responsibility assigned to the district administrator, or if the Board or its members are non-compliant with any governance processes or Board-District Administrator relations. So those were topics that we talked about?
Yep. The strengths that we identified, um, one of the things that has been working out well, regular Board updates. The district administrator, on a regular basis, disseminates information to the Board members through Board updates. The President, uh, the Board President, myself, and the district administrator meet weekly, um, generally. And if there's topics that come up, um, that, you know, maybe Board members brought to my attention, um, that I, I may, I bring to Terry's attention. Terry may make me aware of a situation, and, you know, it, it, it's only fair that their Board members are aware of this information as well. And these Board updates go out on a regular basis. Um, it's definitely a strength, and, you know, it's meant to eliminate those surprises so as Board members don't, you know, get hit in the street and, you know, say, why did this happen, or why did that happen? And, and it's worked pretty well this year. I've, I very much appreciated some of the information on, say, building lockdowns, or, you know, even planned lockdowns, you know, when you're, when you're planning the, um, emergency evacuation drills and that na, thing of that nature. There's a lot of members of our community and stakeholders that, that, that are curious at times, so thank you. Any other strengths that, that's one that we discussed last week. Were there any strengths anybody thought about since last Thursday? We, we, we are very fortunate to have a level of communication that we have as a Board with our district administrator. We did have some, some weaknesses that we, we thought about, um, or just talked about, and some of these, I think there's been many improvement, much work done on, on already. One is, is giving the Board, um, in this language is, is rather rough, and maybe you guys can help me out. Advanced head-up, heads-up on significant, uh, programat, programmatic changes, um, having to do with curriculum, possibly with Tech Ed or the Nacusa Academy. And then maybe, uh, more of a heads-up on significant purchases in advance. And, you know, examples that were just talked about, uh, possibly insurance, changes, software purchases, hardware, et cetera. And, you know, though minor, those are some of the things that, that were mentioned, um, that Board members would like to, to see. Anybody wanna expand on those?
I, I think one of the things you mentioned, that, that last thing that you mentioned was the fact that any, especially anything that requires estimates.
Okay. I think, yeah, there's a bid, what is it, Lynn, off there? Anything over fifteen thousand requires a bid process?
I don't know if that topped my head.
Man, I don't know what that number is.
Right, it requires it, but I mean, even if you're putting bids on.
Putting bids on?
For more expensive stuff, you, you never know, somebody might know, somebody that could get it done very reasonable.
But you have to be careful with quality as well.
I know, I know, I, I get that.
I think it's something that we can kind of look at, and, and, you know, one suggestion possibly could be something similar to the Board update, you know, on business manager update possibly, I don't know. But I think I would like to just put that. I think we can, we can maybe try to find new language a bit, and just maybe looks, you know, we got, I think we're gonna have enough over the next three, four months to, to keep us really busy when it comes to the financial aspects. But it, it's hard to pick on a good policy too, because things, things have been going very well, but, uh.
I would add, and I, I didn't discuss this Thursday, but I just kind of thought of it, the consent agenda. Sometimes I don't know that we get all the information we want out of a consent agenda, so if there's some information that can be shared ahead of time on items of the consent agenda, maybe just in the Board update or something like that.
Yeah. I thought about that with respect to myself, Brian, and, and some of it, I have to get back to discipline, doing a better job reading it before I come to the meeting sometime.
Give an example, Brian.
I think the football coaching would be an example of that.
Oh, the hiring process.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was just gonna touch base with, um, number two on OE Nine. Information in a timely manner, referencing what we talked about, um, behind sessions a month, month and a half ago. That would have been, that's just an example of something like that, so.
Say, say that again, one more time?
Same example, Brian.
Number two on OE Nine.
Yeah.
Um, providing information in a timely manner, what we discussed regarding a coach about a month ago, we related.
That was the consent agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just worry that we get a little lax on that consent agenda. Maybe there's more information that we can be shared about.
Okay.
And some, some of them.
Right, I mean, even, even looking at this, I mean, if there's, if there's a verb that.
Right.
The administrator wants to put in a Board update.
Yeah.
Forget it.
Like if there's some sort of a little red flag even?
Well, or not, or just even if you wanna tell us something about these people, you know.
Oh, okay.
Beforehand.
Sure. Good.
Good, good, good. Anything else? Good one, guys. Dave?
Good.
Only silent one. Okay, I'll put a, a motion on the floor to call for motion to approve OE Nine.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. OE Five, Learning Treatment, Learning Environment, Treatment of Students.
All right, well, we certainly touched on that with our, uh, presentation night, but annually, the Board shall assure that the district administrator has established and is maintaining a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning. So we really took a look at last Thursday, uh, practices that are happening in the district that center around maintaining a climate that is characterized by support and encouragement for high student achievement. So we had one example that we talked about last, uh, Thursday, kind of teased out a little bit with our presentation tonight. Did, do others wanna talk about some of the other topics that were shared last week? Board members or John, Nathan?
I think, I'll just, to reflect upon, Mr. Black, your, what you shared last week, um, regarding, you know, addressing the math issues. Um, we had a guest here at that meeting, and he made his night, I think. Uh, the, the guest member, the.
Oh, yeah.
The person attending. And it was a person from the public that had had a daughter in, in the middle school that had been struggling with math. And when he heard that it's something that, you know, we had learned of through, through our studies or through our evaluations, and, and that there was a focus being, uh, being made on, I think he made his night, and so he kind of hit that one spot on. So that, you know, and there are so many examples like, like that, that are in here of the work that's being done, that I, I just, I wish more parents knew about the content, the deep content of what you guys are working on. You know, all the administrators, not just you, Mr. Black, but John, Mr. Sprain, and Mr. Johnson as well. That have an impact very deeply on, on how these things work for the families.
Well, I'll just leave that as, as, any, if we have any parents watching who are interested in learning more, our doors open, and we welcome it, to be able to help share on those.
Engagement surveys, Terry, do you wanna talk anything about that?
Uh, certainly. Uh, so one of the, the topics around, um, uh, learning environment, we have tracked the, the percentage of kids that are engaged at the middle school and high school. And so over the years, we've seen some trends, and, um, this last year, we only had our high school kids take the assessment, but forty percent of our students are engaged at the high school. And forty, and that, and certainly that's, uh, when you look at all high school kids, that's a high number of students that are engaged. And we have, over time, had less kids actively engaged, and the other indicator is hope. And our, our hope is the ideas and energy students have for the future. And our hope has, you know, we've, about forty-three percent of our students say they're hopeful, uh, but the number of kids discouraged has gone down. We still have some stuck kids that we need to move to hopeful, but, so we've been tracking that, and the, the, the middle school and the high school have been working with their teams to really, uh, change the trajectory for both engagement and hope. So that's, I think that's been a good indicator for us to, to have conversations around, because we want our kids to be engaged and hopeful, so.
Thank you.
So that's been another, I think, heavy hitter for that, that, um, operational expectation.
One big one here, and kind of like, it's follow-up on previous series, and I didn't really look at the guest teacher invites to the teacher training.
Yes. Yep, they were, I think we had, we had quite a few, yeah.
I, I think, just from what I heard, from a few that I spoke to, they're getting a lot of value out of that information upfront. Um, rather than showing up at our door and just say, here you go, come on.
Right.
They're getting a little bit, um, a little bit of training.
And we, we asked them, Diana asked them in the, in the invite, what they want out of the, the session. So we do need to do a follow-up, they want SMARTboard training, so we'll follow up with that.
Very good.
I think the language is, is good on that. I have a question, do we have a operational expectation policy that you could just, um, change some of the words? So this is, is student-oriented, you know, maintain a, maintaining a learning environment. Do we have one that we review, which would be like maintaining a teaching environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective teaching, you know, like for our staff? Do we have that built in somewhere for a policy? Or will there be room to build that in on this policy at some point in the future? This is all student-oriented, but our staff under.
But does that fit under learning environment? Has established and is maintaining a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning? So I think it's staff as well.
I mean, we, we look at it as, as student, I think, you know? So all of our discussion was, I think, revolved around that, but.
I, I like it to teachers, like that guest teacher, you know, that's more for their prep, for giving them the tools they need to do their job. And I, I also think about that, and maybe we need to talk about that more, Brian. But I, that's the way I see it. You know, maybe we need to identify that more, but I, I see it as how, how we give our teachers support as well, the training.
I'd like to build that in, I, I think, more specifically, I guess.
Sure.
Because one is maintain a climate that is characterized, characterized by support, encouragement, high student achievement, to your right. So maybe there needs to be a number two that really addresses.
Cause if we're doing that with our staff, then, you know.
Yep.
Our, our staff is that much better too.
Policy committee, that's all it is.
The, the one thing that I really liked out of our discussion on Thursday was the handle with Kerry, I mean, you talked about. You, the, the teachers are given, or the staff is giving a heads up.
All right, and Brian was here, but he could highlight that, I guess.
Yes, if, if a student was going through something traumatic, or had something that happened at home, that might affect their.
And it was a system that was really done in collaboration with Chief Woods, Josh Collo, Paul Lee Pear, Joe Haynes, and myself. Where we sat down and talked about, you know, because students, if something happens the night before, and, you know, there's police involvement, if we don't know as a school, you know, that kid comes in with a lot of baggage then the next morning. So it's worked very well that the Nacusa PD has worked with us to say, hey, we'll shoot you an email, and here's this. And we have a system set up that wants myself, and, cause it goes to Paul, Joe Haynes, and myself to say, hey, a student's going through this situation.
Right.
We schedule a meeting right away the next morning with the school counselor to say, all right, here's the information, here's what we need to communicate to principals, here's what we need to communicate to staff. That gives them what they need to know. Sometimes in that report, we find out a little bit more of what the situation is, but we say, here's what staff needs to know. So we almost act as that filter to say, here's what we need to know, but I agree, it helps.
I just, I just think it was an ama, and, you know, is an amazing, uh, program.
It's.
So that helps teachers out.
I, I would sure think it does.
Yeah, so, but you see, the staff is built in for that.
I, I think, you know, but we can look at it closer.
I think maybe if we just define that, we, you know, we rein them too, so we can talk, you know, have a discussion about both sides.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, any, any weaknesses, gentlemen, other than the one that Brian brought up anymore? Okay, motion to approve OE Five, as presented, the motion on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. GP Eight. GP Eight, uh, do you want?
Don't make it do that?
Just go over the interpretation as it's on there, just read the first part of our account.
So, um, GPA, the Board commits itself and its members to ethical, lawful, and professional conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum. So, um, GP eight, the board commits itself and its members to ethical, lawful and professional conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum.
This, uh, this was mailed out to all board members, no responses, um. With any violations were, were found. Strengths indicated from last Thursday's meeting, um, board members are stepping up and representing all owners of the district and not letting conflicts and personal interests get in the way of decisions. Communication is a strength of this board. And with, with that mentioned as a strength, uh, any additional strengths gentlemen, weaknesses? No violations, uh, call for a motion to approve GP dash eight.
So moved.
We have a motion, I'm, I got a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. With the consent agenda, Mr., this guy over here, Cody, would you, might reading a little bit of coordination please?
Yep, uh, so we have some donations here for Backpack for Kids, twenty dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Church. Ninety-four seventy-one from Fifty-One Homemakers and fifty dollars from Sacred Heart, uh, thank you to those donors.
I have some more.
Oh, you can see that there, uh, Solaris Partners in Education, two thousand dollars. Country Air Campground, two thousand twenty-two dollars and school supplies. And Nacusa Primary State Bank, two hundred dollars towards the, uh, Nacusa High School hygiene drive. And this is to be used, um, for students throughout the school year, so thank you to those donors again.
Thank you very much, various substantial donations and thank you Cody. Does anybody wanna speak with regards to any of our?
That, that would be, Nathan, do you wanna share anything?
On the employment?
Yeah, that would be good.
We are beyond excited to be working with Bailey Ruscheski as, um, and working as, as a teacher assistant, she brings. A number of strengths that, um, to the table, like just, just today, I was working with a student who was struggling socially and I just got put her, him in, uh, Bailey's orbit and. She's working along those areas and it's just, um, it's, with someone who has great skills and a great mindset, you can do phenomenal things and we're just phenomenal, we're so thrilled to have her.
Thank you, Bailey.
And she's also working the after-school program, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So we've got some tag teaming going on there with the after-school? How about Bobby, do you wanna talk about Bobby?
Bobby Dusas is working with us at the high school as a special education assistant. She has subbed in the district as a special education aide for a couple of years now. And she has been hitting the ground running, is excited to learn and be part of the district and has been. She's been doing a great job, I'm excited to have her on board, so.
And then last week we had talked about Mark Leibmeyer. He's gonna be our new tech ed teacher at Nacusa High School and he's starting in November. And Maureen Whitten, John, you wanna say something about Maureen?
Yeah, uh, Maureen is working on a, Maureen has been working in our building as a guest teacher assistant also and, uh. She's filling the vacancy right now of acting interventionist until we find that teacher candidate. So the prospect of her being here forever and ever until, not until we get that, that candidate that we're looking for. So she's filling the gap until I have that company on, but we're happy to have her and she's an individual who's put, who's worked in this role prior. So we recommend that she join us.
Thank you, Mr. Strain. Okay, um, I'll call for a motion for the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Future agenda items, um, October seventeenth at six P M, um, board workshop to finalize the community survey. And as indicated, our annual meeting will be held on October twenty-second at six P M. With the regular board meeting commencing at six thirty P M. So the workshop and the annual meeting, regular meeting are moved out one more week, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. With that, um. Brian?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a first and, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.